We'll call this October 2nd, 2014, Cookville City Council Meeting to order. Could we have our oral call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmit.
Here.
All present.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Ron Allen of Living Hope Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let's bow heads and will pray. Father, we're so thankful that we can gather here tonight, and we just thank you for blessing this city. Father, we receive your blessings and thank you for them, and pray, Father, for wisdom for this council. Father, wisdom for every city administrator in office. Father, we thank you that you deliver us from wicked and unreasonable people. Father, deliver this city from harm. We thank you so much for wisdom, Father, as we carry out your plan to fulfill your purposes in this beautiful city, Lord. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Ron. Okay, item three, approval of the agenda as presented.
We have no changes.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item four A, consider appointment of council representatives to the Joint Economic Community Development Board. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, Councilman Dwight Henry and Councilman Jim Woodford have agreed to serve on the Joint Economic and Community Development Board.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Councilman Henry and Councilman Woodford to the Joint Economic Community Development Board.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 18th, 2014.
Motion to appro- approve the minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item seven, new business, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance O-140916 rezoning 1937 North Dixie Avenue from RS-10, single-family residential to RD, single-family and duplex residential. The Cookville Planning Commission denied the rezoning request on 8/23/14, and the property owner, Randall King, is appealing the decision to the City Council. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location map of the property. It's a closer view of the subject property, an aerial view of the property as it currently is. And as you noted, this was, the request was initiated by the property owner, Randall King, and as the officer stated, this was denied by the planning commission, and it was denied at the August 14th, August 2014 meeting by a vote of six to two. And then Mr. Gall requested it come before the council. The property is identified as parcel 28 on tax map 40B Group B, and consists of approximately 1.3 acres. There's a single-family dwelling located on the property. The parcel has approximately 100 feet of frontage on North Dixie Avenue with a depth of approximately 560 feet. So as you can see on the ma- on the screen there, that is a rectangular-shaped piece of property. This is the current zoning around the property. It's zoned as RD to the south, and with RS-10, single-family residential on all other sides. The future land use concept plan depicts the property as being suitable for mixed-density residential development. And on the screen is the section of the land use plan with this property depicted. The requested RD zoning complies with this land use classification. The parcel is also located within an area identified in our 2030 plan as being in need of redevelopment and revitalization. The RD district is primarily intended for single and two-family dwellings. Single-family attached dwellings, which are townhouses, are also allowed within this district when they are located within an approved RAO overlay district. The minimum lot size requirement in the RD district is 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. In the current RS-10, it's 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The minimum lot width requirement is 50 feet for a single-family dwelling and 75 feet for a duplex. If you look at this property with 1.3 acres, based on the land area, it would appear that you could do 11 dwelling units. But based upon the dimensions I just gave, your lot size requirements that I just gave you, it'd be difficult for that to occur. It would look like that most you could get out of this would be two parcels. And assuming the property does have 100 feet of frontage on North Dixie, it's possible with the approval of a variance for a flag lot that you could, if it was rezoned, locate two duplexes on the property. And here's the, a simulated division of this with, assuming that there is 100 feet. If there's not 100 feet of frontage, then it could not be subdivided into a flag lot. Now, another option here, which I don't have as a drawing, that if it was rezoned, it could have, be split into two single-family lots also. We did it before the planning commission, have a number of property owners, primarily from the Big Springs Circle subdivision, come, and were with opposition to the request for rezoning, primarily concerns were encroachment of higher density of development and the possible rental of these units to tech students. Also, the planning department was contacted by the owner of one property adjacent to the east of the subject property with concerns about drainage. The planning department did recommend for approval of this rezoning, and as previously noted, the planning commission voted to deny by a vote of 62 the rezoning proposal. If you had any questions, I'll be glad to try and address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. A couple of points of order. Please step to the podium and state your name and address. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made pertaining to this agenda item, and then once the timer sounds, you'll need to wrap up your comments within about 10 seconds. And there will be no yielding of time to another person. So you're welcome to come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Mike Krasnowski. I live at 162 Big Springs Circle. I'm adjacent to a corner lot to this property that's in question. I understand the planning commission wants to, wants to do something with it, or the owners wants to do something, and I appreciate that fact. But this is the problem with that lot, is it's got a bad slope to it, it's got a big dip to it, and there's wet weather springs. So it crowds the man right underneath of it with plenty of drainage water. I live right beside him. I see this throughout the years. To fix that property, I don't know how much money it'd take, and I don't think it'd be feasible to build back there.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. He's kind of first, then you be.
Sorry. I'm Gray Frederick. I live at 129 Big Springs Circle. This was brought to my attention by some of my neighbors who asked me to sign a petition about this development, and I had mentioned to them that when we moved to the property about six years ago, we were provided with a set of restrictions and covenants that were ratified some 49 years ago but still in effect, that only single-family brick dwellings would be built on any of the properties within our neighborhood. We often call our neighborhood "The Little Oasis" because there are a lot of tech students around. There is a lot of student housing, and we appreciate that we have a very quiet neighborhood. It's a no-outlet neighborhood. There's not a lot of through traffic. And, you know, we have a very convenient place with a lot of privacy. And there are some places in the neighborhood where there are some rentals to students, and the traffic gets faster. We have a very narrow street with a lot of curves. Traffic gets faster, cars get parked in the middle of the road, and it becomes less and less a peaceful place, and more and more, you know, encroached upon by folks that we really didn't plan on having in our neighborhood. And it's, you know, I have two kids in college in town. I've got nothing against students, but there's plenty of student housing in this town, and we'd prefer to keep our neighborhood the way it was intended by the McDonald's when they ratified this document. I'd be glad to provide this for y'all to make copies of if you don't already have it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ma'am? Yes.
My name is Wanda King. I would like to see it approved because it would be a great improvement to get new housing there in that neighborhood. It really needs it. I just think it would improve the neighborhood to get new, new buildings there. And I know Big Springs Circle, at the back, down at the back of this acreage, there's a large wooded area that separates Big Springs Circle, you know, from this property. This property is actually facing North Dixie, and you have to go on down the street to turn to go down to their area. And, and I think due to that wooded area down behind, I don't believe it would be a concern to Big Springs Circle, actually.
What is your address, Ms. King?
I'm speaking on 1937 North Dixie. You want my address?
That's, we were just identifying.
Right.
When, when you come to the podium, just so we know if you're in.
I was, I am the widow of Randall King.
Okay.
And that's all. I would just like to see it approved. I think it would be an improvement to the, to the community myself.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jane Wilmeth, and I live at 14 Big Springs Circle. And as you saw on the petition that we took around the neighborhood, we had neighbors on Dixie and neighbors on Big Springs Circle that was opposed to this rezoning. We just feel like that our neighborhood has too many apartments, too many duplexes, too many, too many people that, too much traffic, and I don't see that it's going to improve our neighborhood to have more duplexes built there. We just like to keep our neighborhood nice. It's almost a shame to drive down Dixie now because of the apartments and the mess that's on that street. I wish that each of you would just consider, when you vote, would you want this in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Rebecca Ting, and I have a property right next to this property requesting rezoning at 1939 North Dixie. My lot is similar to this one. It's very long and has a lot of acreage. And of course, for each residential, there's a minimal requirement. It'd never be bad if it's larger and provide more privacy. And so, at the time, we know it's roomful duplex, and we decided to build another house and to meet the require, the code, but it keep the, that environment pretty much the same as a single family. So, you know, I'm not against them to build another house, and hopefully each one will enjoy the larger space and the privacy, and also protect the whole area, still remain the, the single-family atmosphere.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this matter? All right, this will end the public hearing portion of the agenda item, and now the council will discuss and then vote on the business portion of this item. So I'll open it up for council discussion. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, these, these, these kind of issues are really difficult. I never handled one of these without thinking of my first visit when I was home city council a number of years ago. I went to see former Mayor Bob Petit, many of you may remember him, and I said, "What do you know now that you wish you'd known then eight years ago after he had served as mayor for two terms?" And he said, "Well, Dwight, I really think I could, I could sit down with an issue and study it and research it and find out information and kind of come to a black and white on it and see what I needed to do." But I never will forget his response. He said, "He said, 'There's a lot of gray. There's a lot of gray.'" And I found that to be true through the years. And in these kind of situations, while, the dichotomy is just while you want that property owner to be able to enjoy the highest and best use of his property within the confines of the codes, and yet at the same time, you have to be sensitive to the neighbors, to the adjoining properties, and say, "Will that prevent them from enjoying their property and maybe devalue it?" So those kind of things you have, you keep in balance. I think I understand, I guess, having said that, James, that my question would be, but to you, to the extent that this council gave an affirmative vote to this request, what would be, and you may have said this already, but what would be the most that could happen on that particular piece of property as it relates to new construction? The most that could happen based on this action?
Well, without the approval of a variance from the planning commission for a flag lot, the most that could happen would be one duplex. That's all that could happen without a variance for a flag lot. Now, if a variance for a flag lot was approved.
But it's not been yet, and we don't know.
It has not been.
And we don't know that it would be.
We don't know that it would be. We don't have a survey of the site. We don't know for certain that it has a width of 100 feet, which again, you have to have 75 feet minimum for a duplex. And a minimum width of a, for a flag lot, road frontage is 25, so that's the 100. If it has less than 100, that would require not only approval of a variance from the planning commission, but approval of a variance from the Board of Anger Appeals, and that would be unlikely to be granted because it's, that's a pretty good indication it's not suitable for that. So based on it is, the way it is right now, if you rezoned it, the most that could go on it immediately would be a one duplex.
And it would take action by some other governmental body before that could change or add to that in any way?
That's correct. Let me state too, though, that, to be, full disclosure here, that the lots 100 feet wide, the minimum right-of-way width for a public street is 50. You know, if there's a, the feasibility of subdividing this to get more lots into it would be very, very slim because with 100, with 50 feet of the 100 feet utilized for right-of-way, then you apply setbacks to the remaining 50 feet. There's not a buildable area there. So again, that's why we think the only feasible future development of this would be the possibility of a variance for a flag lot.
And one more question for you, James, if you don't mind. The two, two concerns were pointed out by the folks from the neighborhood. One is the possibility that, and that duplex could be rented to tech students, and obviously we can't control who the owner decides to rent to. And, and the issue of the whole, the matter of drainage. I know this was in the comprehensive plan. Was that drainage issue thought about, considered? How do you, I'd love to get your response to that possible drainage problem.
Well, of course, drainage is an issue all over the city. We do have standards for construction when you do new construction to protect for drainage. If drainage was discussed in the plan, and we've modified our drainage regulations some to try to help alleviate some of that. But drainage is a major concern, but by ordinance, you're not allowed to have any more water coming off your property post-development than was occurring prior to the development. And that's a city ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Shipley? I believe that's correct wording for that. But in terms of drainage, if there's an issue now, this house is, this, you can see, this is an old structure, at least 50 years old. Nothing that's happened on this property has caused any drainage issues anywhere else to this point because nothing's changed. It's sat there like this for at least 50 years. So I don't know that you can blame this property. Now, future development of it, I understand the concern there.
But one duplex, in your view, as it relates to drainage, shouldn't create any, shouldn't a.
Well, they'll have to submit plans for how they're going to deal with drainage when they construct this, if they built, if one was to be built. And those plans would be reviewed by our engineers to see that they comply. In terms of the covenants that was mentioned, I don't know that this lot is within, falls under those covenants for the Big Springs subdivision. Was this lot originally part of that subdivision?
No, I'm not sure they have a, a range of lots. I have not seen them mapped to see if it's.
I don't think this was originally part of that subdivision. It might have been.
Was that subdivision, was that 40, how was that?
Uh, this is actually from 1965 with 15-year duration.
Well, I'm fairly certain that house was built, that house was built before 65. I would say it was probably built in the 40s, early 50s.
So let me ask you, if, if this was rezoned now, the, the site, go, go back to the.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Which one?
The one that's the zoning.
The zoning.
So to the south, the south is RD.
Yeah.
And so if this site is rezoned RD, could the adjoining property owner, if they got, then got together, that would change the parameters by which this property would then be used, right? I mean, you could be.
It could because if you're.
Can be joined together, and then you could have apartments or whatever.
No, you can't have apartments.
Can't have apartments.
No.
All right.
Not in RD.
Not in RD.
RD, the most you can have is a duplex. It has to be on an individual lot. You can't go in and put, for example, on this property to the south here, on this property, you can't go in there and put, it's already RD, which is probably three acres, you can't go in there and put 10 duplexes. That's multifamily. The only way you could do that is build a road in there to our standards and cut off lots, 10,000 square feet in size, eight minimum, and put a duplex on each of those lots. So it's just like a regular, it's just like this subdivision would be, except you could put duplexes on each individual lot. That's the difference between this zone and the RS-10. They're same lot sizes, you can get double the units per lot. So what, Ricky, what the points you were making, though, if, and this property owner, there's been some expressive interest from this property owner to acquire this. Now, that's, I don't know if that's reached that point, but if that had happened, then it is feasible that a road could be built in here, cul-de-sac, and several lots cut off of that new street. Sort of across the street here, like this. It's what potentially could happen there.
When I, when I drove over there and drove, drove around, so this back part is, is very, very steep, and I don't remember, I mean, I drove all, all through here, but is this house considerably lower than, than the, the level part of this?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And this, this is the gentleman that came to see me. I don't think he's here right, but the last big rain, he had photographed, and he had quite a bit of water coming through there.
But once again, if, if something was developed, there would need to be retention areas built there to stop.
Depends on how that lot drains. If they didn't touch back here, and this naturally, and this lot sort of, it's sort of like that. Part of this does come out to this way. It's all going to depend on what an engineer says, but if it's, if the development occurs out here, that's not going to create any more water coming back here, there probably would not be any retention back there if what the development is. It's just going to depend on what occurs.
Sure. Go ahead, Councilman Woodford.
If you don't mind, I'm very familiar with this area, and since I'm on the planning commission, and this was brought up, and since then, and as recently, I've been out there about three or four times. Dwight, you joined me one time to, you know, to see what this area looked like. Since I am on the plan, I was, in that six to two vote, I was in the minority in that. I was a, you know, agreeing, agreeing to rezone this piece of property. And the reason that I used for basing my judgment to rezone it was that we had done a study, a long-range, and it's this plan right here, the Cookville 2030 Plan, that identified this area as being suitable for the rezoning request that was made. The property owner, as Mr. Mills has said, is very limited what can be done with the lot because of its narrow width. He can't do apartments, and it's only suitable for up to two lots, and that is if the planning commission would allow a flag lot, which I don't see happening. Minimum width for a duplex, like you said, was 75 feet. I just don't think other than one would, is, that the site is right now, you'd see more than one duplex at all. Big Springs Circle is north of this location, about, I'd say roughly 250 feet, and it starts for, I'm concerned, as far as that, that housing, at least 100 feet from Dixie, and it descends. This area is, as they said, is almost secluded from any type of the housing that is on Dixie, whether it's multifamily or single dwelling because of the sloping terrain away from Dixie. And added to this, the many trees and vegetation, they do have a little sanctuary back there. I don't see this rezoning having a negative impact on those property owners. I know as you travel north on Dixie Avenue from 12th Street north, on both sides, east and west, that you've got a clutter of multifamily units, duplexes, older single-family homes. It is not the prettiest place to go through, but this is something that has occurred over the last 40 years. So to go in and change it, I think is financially impossible because you have income-producing property in this area. And as you drive up that, for the most part, you're looking at student housing for Tennessee Tech. That is the, what I consider the 800-pound gorilla in the room, that this area is primarily, for the most part, where students want to live when they attend tech. And from that standpoint, I'm sorry that that's happened, but that's something that's happened over multiple decades. But for this area, 1937 North Dixie, I don't see, I don't have a problem with rezoning it.
There's, there's one other option here, and we didn't talk about this at, at planning commission, that, that you could consider, is modifying what portion of this property would be rezoned, which would further restrict what could happen. You could look at doing, you know, 10,000 square feet of it. You could look at doing 20,000 square feet of it, and that would guarantee no more than two duplexes could ever be built on it, or until it was rezoned or acquired and rezoned again in the future. But you could modify what's been submitted and just rezone a portion. And that would leave the back side, you could leave the back half acre or more, single-family, that would be a buffer for the Big Springs subdivision. But that is a possibility.
Go ahead. I've gone out and looked at this property, and gone out and looked at the Big Springs area, and I think it is "The Little Oasis," and it looks much better than a lot of the surrounding areas with all the Tennessee Tech students that have lived in, or in the different apartments. And I like this letter from the Big Springs area neighbors that says, "Most of us have lived in this area for many years, enjoyed rearing our families in the neighborhood. All the families in the Big Springs Circle maintain their property in respect to neighbors to keep a nice, family-oriented neighborhood in Cookville. However, over the years, the area adjacent to Big Springs Circle and along Dixie Avenue have been rezoned from single residential homes to apartments and multifamily homes." And the, and it goes on and goes on, and says, "The area has become an eyesore." And I agree with the, the Big Springs area neighbors on that respect. I think what we should do is back our planning commission in a split decision, and I have great respect for the two people. I think the other gentleman was Jim Staffney.
That's correct.
Jim Staffney and Councilman Woodford, who for good reasons voted the way they did, but I think because a majority of, a big majority, six of the planning commission voted to, to not rezon this, I think we should go along with the planning commission.
So if, if we were going to consider what you just mentioned about modifying the zoning so that perhaps you do 10,000 feet and one duplex could be built? I don't, to me, again, I drove out there and looked at it, and I want to be respectful. Most people's property is one of their prized possessions other than their family, so I want to be very cognizant of that. To me, if you could guarantee that one duplex would be built there, I, I would have a hard time understanding how that would be worse than having just one house, because the duplex would obviously, in today's terms, how it would be built, would be built better and more modern and more up to date. And if you protected the backside of that, then that would alleviate the drainage issues. So you would really be looking at replacing one structure with another, perhaps with one more family, but a better structure, which I would think would increase property values in the area, you would hope. So if you, if you wanted to pursue that, you would say rezone 10,000 square feet of it?
I think you would amend the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, I think that's the first thing you'd have to do.
You would amend.
You would amend the motion to approve it and limit it to 10,000 square feet, the front 10,000 square feet, I guess.
I would make that an amendment, to amend it, to approve the front 10,000 square foot portion, so one duplex structure only could be built.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and now we'll have discussion on this.
Discussion on the amendment.
On the amended motion.
Uh, I have no problem with that, because the back, back portion of this site is severely sloped, so I don't think it's really feasible to build on the backside of it, so keeping this closer to Dixie, I can agree with that.
Anybody else have?
I just, I'd, you guys have already expressed all this much better than I can, but I mean, I just want to see this come out as a win-win. You're right, Mayor, that you want to, you want to respect the property owner's desires to improve, to improve their property and enhance, enhance their lives through that improvement, whether it be through income or whatever. Person has a right to do that, but you also want, I've also been of advocate of being good neighbors. I mean, I grew up in a place where you, when you did something to your property, you made sure your neighbors were okay with that. So I, I would like to see this come out as a win-win. If, if, I was not going to go, go against the Planning Commission's decision, decision on this, but if, if I can get some, something tangible that says that this could be by modifying it this way, I'll vote for this amendment. Mr. Mills, I'm going to kind of look towards you, and Mr. Woodford, because you, you guys...
But this has to go back to the Planning Commission under this scenario?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think you can modify it, um, based on, because you had the, you're the final say-so on it.
Okay.
Although I did not, we did not discuss this before the Planning Commission as an option, um, but, uh...
You're, give, I, I just want to hear the assurance that, under what I've proposed and now has been seconded, that rezoning just the front 10,000-foot portion still obviously can't be, because it's RD, there can't be apartments. All that could be built is one structure will be, could be replaced with one other structure, and it would be a duplex.
If we only rezone 10,000 square feet, then that's all that could occur, because that would prohibit a flag lot from occurring, because you would take 25 feet of the frontage, would be deducted from that lot.
Okay.
That would drop it below 10,000 square feet. So what you would end up with, you know, 1.3 is probably 55,000 to 60,000 square feet. You're going to have, the vast majority of this property is going to be a big green area. It would have to be, because it couldn't be utilized.
Still...
So you're, you're providing a huge buffer.
Still offers protection.
But, but, let's, let me clarify this, though. That doesn't mean that in some point in the future, maybe when we're all gone, that somebody comes in here and tries to rezone again. This is not a, we're not, I don't want to present this as a permanent protection or solution to that, because it's not.
We'd have to revisit that again.
Yes, but that's a hypothetical.
That would have to go to the Planning Commission, and then once again, come back to this, whatever it was, whether it was adjoining neighbor or, or not.
Yes.
But under this scenario, this does protect the back of the lot, it gives, allows to build one unit of a duplex on the front portion at this time, and that would be it, without any further, it would require some other further action upon the Planning Commission and the council to change that.
That's correct. Let me, I need someone to...
You know, what I, of course, we've heard some concerns from a couple of aspects, but what I, I think I hear from the citizens in the area, maybe without even being said, is that, is that there's a fear that, that an affirmative action by the council on this request would get them on a slippery slope, and would get the, you know, the nose of the camel under the tent, so to speak, and would fear of what would come later. Uh, I think that's, I think that's part of what I'm not hearing, but I think that's a concern. Uh, and I think the mayor's amendment addresses that specifically, and I, and, and puts one single duplex there, or one duplex there, and, and I don't see that one duplex can inherently harm, harm that neighborhood. And we can't speculate on what a future council might be able to do, or what a future Planning Commission do, we can only deal with what we're doing tonight. So that's the reason for my seconding and supporting that amendment.
Well, I mean, going down that path, too, I mean, if, if we denied this tonight, a future council could change and allow the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have even brought that up.
Well, I mean, I, I was legitimate, I mean, it's just important to point out both sides, that it doesn't prohibit a future council from doing, changing what we've done, or, or acting upon something we don't do.
Two other points, and one that we've not really stressed, is that it is within an area that we've identified in our plan as being in need of redevelopment, and that's a part of the reason, too, why the planning department recommended that we could, in this case, get what is maybe not dilapidated, but surely a, a house that's, that's gone down in status, get it something more attractive in the area. And really, density's the main incentive we've got for that to occur. It's hard for somebody to, to buy, you know, this 1.3 acres, I'm sure for what the value they think it is, and, and build another home there.
Right.
But I do understand the residents' concerns.
I do, too. As, as Vice Mayor Epp said, you know, you, you look at these things, and, and you want to look at them objectively, just as parcels of property, but there are people associated with them, so I'm trying to be conscious of that, that's, that was the only reason I made the amendment, to try to, like he said, have a win-win, and, um, perhaps it is. Any other comments? So we're going to vote on the amendment, which would be rezoning the 10,000, front 10,000 square foot portion to allow one duplex on the site now.
Can it say approximately 10,000, because, um, what I, here's my suggestion, is that we just change the description to say 110 feet back, and that will put it slightly over 10, but that makes sure if it's only 99 or 98 feet, while I hate to go through this, and with the impression, if we do exactly, until it's been surveyed, I don't know the dimensions, and I've got to be able to write a legal description. So if we could say the first 110 feet, the lot's 100 feet, so that puts you at slightly over 10,000, it still would be just a duplex, but that way, if there is some...
I don't think the exact dimension is, at least in my mind, the main consideration, as opposed to...
It's the number.
We're trying to ensure...
But I have to have a number for the ordinance and for the map, and if 110 would make sure I've got 10,000.
If you permission, we can just write the...
We'll, we'll just write that into the...
Hey, for you to have to do an amendment to the...
Oh, that's fine.
No, I don't want to do that, but...
We'll, we'll write that in, with the point being, this, this actually removes it then from going back to the Planning Commission and even be talked about a flag lot, we've removed that option off the table.
Now, that would not be an option if we stayed.
Now, it's one unit, one structure, period. Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the amendment to allow approximately 110 feet, to allow one structure on this site, and all vote.
Four yes, one day, motion carries.
Okay, and now you'll vote.
Motion as amended.
So the complete motion as amended would be to allow...
Rezone the first 110 feet.
The first 110 feet to allow one structure, and now all vote.
Four yes, one day, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item 7B, set a date for a public hearing. Ordinance O-141017, 2082 North Willow Avenue, from RS-15 to CL.
November the 6th.
November the 6th.
2014 at 5:30 PM.
All right, 7C, consider declaring a surplus vehicles, equipment, and miscellaneous items. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the, have some various equipment from three different departments. We'd ask to declare surplus from our, I believe that's Leisure Services memo that's on the screen now. Leisure Services has two, uh, two vehicles, uh, two service trucks, both, well, a truck and a van, and both of those are well over 20 years old, high mileage, and pretty much in disrepair. And typically, the vehicles that Leisure Services gets are hand-me-downs a lot of times from other departments. So these, we've certainly got our money's worth out of those two vehicles, I'm sure. Within the Police Department, they have 12 police cars that they would ask to declare surplus. Those all have either high mileage, they've been damaged in wrecks, and we scavenge all the parts we can off of those vehicles. So they have 12 vehicles to declare surplus. And then within the Water Department, we have two service trucks. Again, all of these vehicles are well over 20 years old. We have, except for one, that is 11-year-old Ford F-150. But again, all of these vehicles have high mileage, uh, they've been in service for extended period of time. Uh, it's just not feasible to put a lot of money into them and get them back on the road, uh, but I would ask that you declare these items a surplus, and if you do, they would be sold on govdeals.com, similar website to eBay, people bid on these items, but I would ask your approval.
Very good. Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion among the council. Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
7D, consider authorizing city manager to execute a transportation demand contract between Tennessee Gas Pipeline and Cookville Gas Department. Sponsor Jeff Mills.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the transportation demand contract we currently have with Tennessee Gas Pipeline, uh, will expire October 31st, 2015. We're obligated to respond with a right of first refusal notice by October 31st, 2014. The Cookville Gas Department has renegotiated the contract with them, and we wish to enter to an agreement with the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. Our, the contract consists of transportation cost of 3,500 decotherms a day at the current annual rate of $963,404. The new negotiated contract rate will be at an annual cost of $694,945, with an annual savings of $268,459. This contract is a 10-year term and will begin November 1st, 2015, when the current contract expires. Just a couple of bullet points to make sure we all know what I'm trying to, to let you know about, is it is a renegotiated contract about the upstream capacity, and the capacity is the portion of the pipe that it takes to get the gas here. It's a contract for the demand of the gas transportation only, has nothing to do with the actual cost of the gas that we buy, and it is a 10-year contract term, beginning November 15th, or November 1st, 2015. Once again, it's 3,500 decotherm a day contract, at a current contract rate of 963,000, the negotiated rate will be 694,000, with an annual savings of $268,459. And I request your approval and try to answer any questions you have.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion among the council.
Just as, as a matter of curiosity, I mean, I compliment you on your negotiating there, that's an incredible savings, is it? Is that, I mean, I know you're good negotiators, but is, is it a buyer's market out there? I mean, what's going on that we're able to save a quarter of a million dollars?
It is right now. We're not the only system that currently has a contract coming due right now, so they kind of enhanced our negotiating power with this. We had more options than just the one company to purchase from, and so the, the rates bounced back and forth, uh, because of other municipalities that had another system that had gone before us, had kind of turned back some of their capacity, so it kind of gave them an awakening that, you know, we're not the only game in town, so, uh, this negotiation's been going on for probably since April, back and forth, a little bit.
So this is $260,000 a year. Again, how many years is this contract?
It's a 10-year contract.
So that's $20,000.
And that's an annual, that's an annual savings of $268,000, yes.
Now, are we under contract now?
Yes, we are.
All right. I noticed this didn't start for another year.
Yes.
Is the contract we're under now, how long was it originally?
Uh...
Is 10 years unusual?
It was probably a 10-year contract, also, I'm not exactly sure, yes.
Can we negotiate any of this savings for this last year of this current contract?
No.
No? Didn't I look that way?
To make it retroactive.
And it was looking for a long time, like we weren't going to negotiate this much, it was going to be the same.
And again, for purposes of clarity, this is not the cost of the gas, it's just the infrastructure to get there.
This is just the capacity to get the gas here, the portion of the pipe to get it here, yes.
Any other discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
City REX, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Texas Eastern Transportation Company for additional demand capacity.
Mayor and council, um, the Gas Department is proposing here to an agreement with Texas Eastern Transmission Pipeline in increasing their upstream demand capacity by another 500 decotherms. Uh, the increased pipe capacity will allow us to provide additional demand capacity for future system growth by allowing us to better manage the balance between the upstream and our downstream capabilities. The additional demand cost will be $68,110 per year. We're going to take this, um, the funding for this out of the proposal that y'all just agreed to, the $268,000 savings. So it's going to be a reinvestment in the system from the previous savings. And in March of 2014, the city council approved a contract with Texas Eastern for a 2,000 decotherms a day increase. What we'll do is, and that was a five-year contract, what we'll do is, they're going to revise that contract to include this additional 500 decotherms, and, uh, make it a 10-year contract, so it will also begin in, uh, November 1st, 2015. Just a couple of easy bullet points on it, it is a 500 decotherms a day increase for a cost of $68,110, beginning November 1st, 2015. And like I say, we're, uh, planning on paying for the $68,000 out of the savings that you just agreed to, of the 268,000. So from these two agreements, it will give us a net savings of $200,348 annually for the next 10 years.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion among the council. Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider awarding bid for TDR thumper high-pot sectionalizer, Tony Peake. Say that five times real fast.
Mayor and council, let me take this opportunity, if I may, to tell you what a TDR thumper high-pot sectionalizer, sectionalizer really is.
Please do, Tony.
Really awesome.
Sounds painful.
This is, no, this is an underground, uh, cable fault locating device, uh, we refer to it as a thumper. And basically, if you have a bad underground cable, instead of digging that up or digging a new ditch and putting new cable in, you use this device to be able to, uh, apply a DC charge to that cable that, that will actually thump the ground where the fault is, and you can dig at that location, find the fault, repair, repair the fault without digging folks' yards and parking lots and those kind of things up. We've had a unit for an excess of probably 20 years, it failed some months ago, and we have a loner as we speak, uh, and this is a budgeted item, it's under budget, and I'd recommend for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Does sound like something Dr. Womack would have used in some of his exams at one time, but that's all I'll say about that. So, uh, any more discussion?
I think that calls more than call.
Yeah, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, this time, uh, any citizens that would like to, um, speak before the council on anything that wasn't on the agenda? Yes, please come and identify yourself, couple of points of order, uh, just state your name and address, and, um, you can talk for up to three minutes, and once the timer sounds wrap up within 10 seconds, and comments should be directed to the entire council and not individual members.
I'm Rebecca Ting, I live at 523 North Washington Avenue, and I have, um, I want the council to aware of the suffering the landlord has, um, from the utility department. Um, I, every month I have to pay about 20 different utility bill, water, electricity, or whatever, and, uh, if, if one of them I misplaced and forgot to pla- to pay, and it happened last year, and, um, so I thought, oh, and then, then, I usually catch up the next month when I pay, and they tell me what I owe, I catch up. And I've been doing that for, you know, since, ever since I live in Cookville, 30-some years, but then they, somehow they say it was too late, they cut it off. So I have to come in and pay the reconnection fee, and, uh, uh, they charge everything, I pay them. It was something like 20-some dollars. The, the problem is that I, I, I'm punished, there's a penalty of the following year, everything if I request to turn it on, usually landlord, um, have, can pay like $10 for each service, because usually it's a, uh, a short-term service and to clean apartment or whatever, and then, uh, the new people can move in. The, since this happened, and anything I apply, any address I apply under my name, I have to pay the regular service charge, which is $55 for electricity, 45 for... forty-five for water, I think forty-five for gas, so, you know, if I need to clean apartment, whatever, um, instead of paying ten dollars for each service, um, I have to pay like, um, the forty-five, fifty-five, and I know it, I have a fault, you know, but I think the punish is too severe. Can they consider just limit on that address, or, you know, shorten the, the time? And, because, you know, I, I think, um, the, the punishment doesn't fit the crime, is too much.
Thank you, Ms. Ting. Anyone else? Any comments from the council?
I'd like to say something about the Police Department, uh, it's pretty obvious what they do, but one of the, uh, things that they do for us citizens, uh, in the Traffic Division, uh, I've just had to do this recently, I've got a grandson now, and he's grown a little bit, and one of the services they provide down at the Traffic Division on Jefferson is to install infant seats, and for those of us that get frustrated parents and grandparents trying to install those, it's nice to have somebody free of charge and very courteous install these for us, so I'd like to thank Chief Evans, Major Maxwell, and Lieutenant Brown for doing such a good job, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, good words there. Anyone else? We, we will stand adjourned.